In this meeting of the Yamhill County Transit Area Board of Directors. And on our agenda this morning is the first action item we have is a consideration of approval of the minutes from April 26, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved that we accept the minutes from April 26, 2018 with no changes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Let the record show Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Starett, Commissioner Primzic voted in the affirmative. Moving on to item number two, consideration of an amendment, number two, to the agreement between Yamhill County Transit Area, YCTA, and First Transit to increase in the amount of $110,000 to provide a $2 per hour wage increase for transit staff to address workforce retention beginning in the 2018-19 budget year. Do I hear a motion?
I just had a question, so...
And I have one too, so...
Okay, do we want to discuss or make a mo—do you want to make a motion?
Well, we need to have a motion. I would make the motion that we approve this amendment.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yeah, my only thing that after reading the amendment and looking at this that doesn't seem—I know the theory behind this is to provide the drivers with the two-hour, $2 increase, but the way it's worded was staff and it doesn't say specifically drivers. We—once we give them that strip—we have really no control. They could spend it on operational costs, they could spend it on administrative costs. I would like to see that amended where it specifically says that $2 an hour is for drivers only.
Cynthia.
I actually think I made a mistake by putting staff—it really is supposed to be for transit operators only.
Yeah, and I'd like to see that as part of the amendment.
That modification?
Right.
Yes.
Any dis—any concern with that?
No.
Then I would modify my motion to indicate I move approval of this with the amendment as outlined by Commissioner Olson. Okay. Any further discussion? Commissioner Starett? No further discussion?
No further discussion.
Oh, okay. You were not in your head, I wanted to make sure I—okay. With the amended motion then, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Let the record show Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Starett, Commissioner Primzic voted in the affirmative. Moving on to item number three on our agenda, consideration of a proposal to approve a bus graphics design concept with funding and procurement timeline. And I'm gonna let Cynthia bring us up to speed on this before we take any action.
Good morning Chair Primzic and board members. So, developing the—an updated image has kind of been an ongoing goal of mine personally since—pretty much since I have arrived because I know how important it is to the overall success of a transit system. And so even though this work isn't really included in my scope of work, whenever I've had time, I've worked on it and have slowly but surely started to, you know, make some changes. It's—you may recall, it started with sort of a revision of existing logo and we went to the teardrop logo, updated our webpage and did some improvements there. The drivers actually got new uniforms and they—we did go with the green and the purple colors. And then I've worked with numerous, a variety of graphics companies over the last couple years. Whenever I had time or have a little bit of money in marketing budget, I've gotten some ideas and then we did update the bus schedules as well, got some bus schedules And then I researched, gathered lots of information. I could show you stacks and stacks just because I'm a little bit obsessed with the whole thing. This is just like the most recent handful of a variety of different concepts. And so even though you see this and it may seem rather simple, there's been a lot of work that's gone into it over the last couple of years. A lot of thought, a lot of time, a lot of energy. So where we're at in the process and what's next is that if the board is comfortable with approving basically the design concept, which provides enough information for me now to get actual bids from graphics companies to be able to create the graphics and to give us pricing for installation. So I have the bid document ready to be sent out and then we will send it to—I think I have four or five local vendors, there's vendors all around in the area and there's even some up in Washington. So we will send out the bid to—the list and we're asking that quotes be returned by July 13th. And so I was thinking while we're waiting for the bids, creating a true Yamhill image to replace—if you see on this drawing here, there's an image, it's sort of a landscape image, but I think it would be nice to have that image truly reflect what Yamhill County would like it to reflect. And so I think the idea of getting input from you all and from also writers and transit staff and our community members and other stakeholders, friends of the bus is important. So while we're waiting for the bids to come back, assuming you approve the color scheme and the concept and the fact that it'll be full of bus wraps, that sort of thing, then we can work on getting out an image and getting some input from folks if it has all the elements that they'd like to see, that sort of thing. And then we can get that created in time for the actual bus wrap. And I think in conjunction with that, I have—I have a million different slogan ideas, but I thought I would narrow it down to like top three or four that I think are good and let folks weigh in on what they—what they like the best and we can—we can have a slogan also. This sample has "Get There With Us." I didn't actually come up with that one, but it's fine. But there's others that we will put on the table for people to provide input to. So I think in your handout that I gave you, I think it gave you some background of, you know, sort of why I think it's important, some information about the buses. I might as well give you an update on where we're at with the buses because I just learned yesterday. The four R-bucks that the county purchased with county funds, they're gonna be here on Friday, actually. So, yeah, I thought it was only gonna be one on Friday, they called and said, "No, we'll have all four of them." So those we may—because we really do need some buses, they may go out with just, you know, not much on them. I'll probably get just a logo put on the door as soon as possible and then they'll be in operation until we're ready to do this. The other buses are slated to arrive—they ship in end of this month, the second midsize bus does—oh, anyway, it doesn't matter, I'll share that with you now, but they'll all be here by mid-August. And so if you look on the second page of your handout, you'll see that this is my estimated timeline at the bottom here. So what we're thinking is if you approve the design concept, the core color scheme today, we'll send out the bid request, ask for them to be back by June 18th and then between June 18th and the 28th, we'll be getting input on the image and the—well, we get the image and the slogan, get the draft illustration out to stakeholder groups between June 28th and July 10th, and then select the vendor by July 20th, come back to you with the full proposal, here's everything, we'll have the actual image. And then I'm estimating that we get all the bus installations out between end of July and mid-August.
And you're—and that would be on the 10 new buses?
10, and I think we have an—if—oh, and that's another thing I should touch on, the make sure you're all in agreement. We had talked about this, but we didn't briefly, we talked about it on a couple of occasions, I think. There was 113,000 that had been carried forward for a number of years in the reserve column and it was—we were gonna use it for match for buying buses. And then we had written a grant and got match funding through a STF discretionary grant. So I had suggested maybe we could use that funding to help pay for the bus graphics. So that is—that has been what I am suggesting we should do. And so I think with that amount of money, until we get the prices in, I'm not totally sure, but just from what I know, I'm thinking we should be able to get all 10 plus our newest buses. We have six kind of very large catoway buses that are—we purchased in 2013. I think we should be able to get all of those as well, but I won't really know until we get those.
Good bits, man.
The other thing to point out is I really would like to see us do the entire full wrap. We may have to modify it. She did an example down here of like a partial in case the cost is too high, but I—I kind of—I just want to share that with you in case we have to do some kind of modification, but I think we're gonna be able to afford to do all of them in that manner. And the other thing is these are concepts, they don't have things like our web—they will have our phone number, they'll have our website address on them. They'll—the other thing I was thinking is that since the R-box will be here, we'll start with the very—with the first—with one R-box, we'll wrap it and that might even be an option for everybody to come look at it. And then if, say, for example, I noticed the contrast on what I'm calling the destination symbol, where we go, is not very good on these—this example here. This is printed on the actual 3M material. So the things like that where we'll want to make sure it's really how we want it, we have enough contrast, the color is exactly right and—so that way we aren't going and wrapping 10. We'll do one, we'll tweak it, make sure that everything is the way we want it before we move on to wrap the rest of them. So—and then as I mentioned in the memo, this是你 know, this maybe isn't exactly the way you would normally do this, but in our case, I think it's the right way to do it is to be doing the buses. And then in the transit development plan, one of the high priorities is to get signage, markings, get all of the, you know, bus schedules updated, get new maps. And all of those will be coordinated and color complemented and all of those sorts of things so that it all does tie together. The thing I didn't mention for Rick's—Rick wasn't at the meeting, but the reason you have four types is part of the plan is that eventually, once our fleet is where we really want it to be, and this may take a little bit of time, each color of the bus that has it like blue in the front, that—that will represent our on-call type services, our on-demand services. The second one with a little bit more of a reddish color, that will represent—it could be a vehicle that size on dialer ride as well, so you may have one like that with blue. But we—in the plan, there's—there's—it's a priority that the smaller communities have more service. So let's say a Willamina, Sheridan would be dedicated a bus and a certain number of hours to do either demand response or flex service or whatever kind they want. So that second vehicle would be a vehicle that would be serve that type of the community. And then I think there'd be opportunity for them to do something creative with it that's still staying within the brand, but giving a little bit of ownership to them and their community. And then the green represents our local service, so that'd be Newburgh Local and McMinnville Local fixed routes. And then the larger buses represent commuter service for the longer, longer routes. I think eventually what they'll do—in the beginning, it may just be, "Oh, you have colorful buses." But over time, once they really truly have those buses and the size of buses on the type of service, then it'll be really easy for people to know, "Oh, they're that." For long distance, they'll be able to see, "Oh, that's the commuter bus." Because there are stops where a bus—multiple buses may serve a particular stop. And right now, no one can tell whether it's a dialer ride or there's a fixed route, whether it's a commuter bus, they don't—it's just they're all—you know, sometimes they can tell because typically the bigger buses are on the commuter routes, but not always. So I think eventually it'll—it'll really make it a lot easier to understand. The whole goal is to make it user-friendly. And I think the destination symbol is helpful, although it isn't quite—the name—the city names, I don't think, quite large enough, but—and we need to fix the contrast a little on that. But then people will know where we serve, so let's say you don't know anything about Yamhill County Transit, you're driving by, you'll see that, "Oh, wow, I didn't know they went to Salem and Hillsborough." So it's sort of a simple way to get that message across. If one day you ever did want to advertising, I personally think the buses are our best opportunity for our own advertising of the transit system. But just so you know, most buses, you can place advertising over the top of this and then—and then take it off. It's actually better to do it over the top of a graphic than it is to do it over paint. Because I did look into what if we just painted the buses, especially when we're getting new buses, we could just do it with paint rather than graphics. It isn't really any cheaper and actually it's less flexible. So TriMed initially, when they did their redo—re-design, they did paint a whole section of their buses and I learned that they've actually gone to—switched it over to graphics because when they do do their advertising, it's better and easier for them to deal with it with their graphics. Now this timeline, I'm gonna do my best to stick to it and I think the other advantage is that based on— And I think the other advantage is that, based on, if I could find my note, it wouldn't exactly be the big buses over here. Here it is. So the, we have one of the midsize buses that'll be ready in about, they're just waiting for the header sign. It should be ready in about a week to 10 days. The second one's going to ship on July 22nd and be here by the end of July. They have to add on all the different options, so we've still got to add another three weeks to that. And then the larger buses are expected to arrive mid-August. So I think actually the timing of this might be about different for doing the bus graphic installation. I should have a question.
Okay. Well, I just want to say how much I appreciate the amount of work you put into this, Cynthia. And having been in a number of different meetings that Cynthia's attended at M-WAC and various other meetings with ODOT, I think we're very, very fortunate to have a person with Cynthia's knowledge of the transit and the way she has brought our transit system up from where it was when I arrived here, which was really scary and we almost did not pass an audit. We, we were in dire risk of losing all of our transit funding. And Cynthia's just done an amazing job, has a tremendous knowledge of the transit system. And I really do applaud you for all the work you've done. The, I, I like the idea of being able to identify our buses. I can see a color, I know who they're serving. So anyway, I do appreciate the energy and effort that's gone into this. So with that, I would ask for comments?
Do you want to motion?
Make a motion, I have a comment.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we move forward with approving the basics and allowing Cynthia to move forward with putting out a request for bids on, on this so we know where we're going with it. And then we can find out if the funding that she's got set aside in reserves will facilitate doing what we want to do so we can take a real hard look at finalizing this, so.
Yeah, my only comment is, and I'm very pleased with the graphics. I like the color scheme, I like the designation of what buses go where. And so I think Cynthia, they did a great job, she did a great job on designing this. My only comment was, is that I think last year, when Cynthia and I first started discussing this, we missed a big opportunity. And I thought we had an opportunity at that time to make all the high schools and the two colleges that serve the area, including Schmeckda, and let their marketing students as a project come up with what a design might look like and see how we incorporate that design. And I think we missed an opportunity to not involve our local high schools, our local colleges. Because that's done all over the state, they have these kind of competitions. But that being said, you know, that's what I would have preferred. But that being said, I'm very pleased with the way the graphics look. I like the colors, I like the fact that they designate whether they're local or whether they're, they're transit type buses or commuter type buses. So that was my only comment and other, other than that, I...
I would just, I would just add to what Commissioner Olson said. And I know that there is another opportunity for our schools, our colleges and our community to add their particular spin on this with a, with a graphic and with a slogan. So this might be the base code, but I think with a real creativity will come. And perhaps that would be an opportunity for our schools to get involved there. And I know you're planning on...
Also, we will have some spare vehicles that we won't, that we may want to keep because they're, they're decent shape. We've put enough money into it, it's not really worth getting rid of them. So similar to what we do with the U of O festival bus, I think that, that's a good opportunity because then you're not in a rush, you don't have a deadline, you don't have a, think you can make the process work at, you know, with whatever group. I think, I would love to see that happen where they could be involved and we could maybe come up with a way to have our spare buses still tie into this, but maybe do something more fun and creative.
Like for our summer, if we go with the summer recreational type bus?
Yeah, have the, have, yeah, or, or even, you know, just a, we know we're going to be, because a bus we may be getting rid of in, in a couple of years and, you know, we could do something fun. It's not going to be on the road every day.
I'm all for that. But again, that being said, I love the design, the base design.
If I'm clear on this, then the graphics, that you, you haven't finalized a graphic design or you have finalized a graphic?
Well, basically, the thing that isn't finalized, that image is like a vineyard in a, you know, landscape.
Right, right.
That is really just a placeholder image. What I thought would be important tonight, I actually, Renee happened to have her daughter draw this little, it's just a very rough sketch, but I think it's kind of, it's more representative like farm and agriculture has a little spaceship flying there. And I thought it might be nice to have her do it. But I was thinking we'd come up with two examples and make sure, you know, I did do quite a bit of research. I got ahold of, this is, you know, the last couple of years. But I did get caught, every city in Yamhill County's, all of their logos, what they consider to be kind of their image. Tried to take that into account when I was thinking about what are the components that ought to be in there? Like, are you really missing anything big, you know? I mean, obviously, we have the wine industry, we have forest parks, we have farming, we have agriculture. You know, there's a lot of different things, I think, but you could certainly be missing something. So I think coming up with a custom, if you have any of your, aware of any like illustrations, drawings, images that you think really, I even went down a path of your Yamhill County logo. I did one sample, I should have probably brought that one, but it just didn't look right. But I looked at it one day, I'm driving to work and I see the logo. And I thought, well, you know, that's really cool, you can make that really colorful. So I did one where I did it on the side of a bus with, but made it really colorful, put it on. And it just didn't quite work. And so there was lots of evolution. But I think having an image that really does as much as possible represent it. But it also has to be fairly clean and simple because you don't have, I think we should cover the back two windows. You'll notice on these earlier ones, they don't cover the windows. The one issue with when you cover the windows, it's sort of a perforated material. Doesn't tend to last as long, although the overall wraps are guaranteed for seven years and we're, the way we're quoting them with the type of material it is. Typically, they last seven to 10. But the windows sometimes, depending on where you're at, where in town, they can not last quite as long. But I think it just makes the image look better. So I think once you come up with the right image, then it'll, you know...
So if I, just so clear in my own mind, if we did the wrap for the coloration and get the buses on the road, and if we were to move forward with some kind of a, I don't know, design program utilizing the schools, that is something that could be applied at a later date?
Excuse me, Commissioner, I think if you look at the schedule on the handout, Cynthia's suggesting that she present a few images to stakeholders, the YCTA Advisory Committee, some writers, the Friends of the Bus and other key groups. And that that be the process to decide the slogan and the image for these buses that get wrapped.
Great.
Then more of a contest or, or interactive process for community, schools, colleges, community colleges for the spares. And that's later on. That way we get the buses wrapped and the images decided on in the more immediate timeframe. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Cynthia, a question going back to what Commissioner Primisic said. It, it seems to make sense, whatever logo, whether it's this one or one, I like the one that represents more Yamhill County, more the agriculture and not just the wine. Going back, it, it, to me, it seems like it's better to have that incorporated into the original wrap and then putting a second over it. So I think to me, it would be important that we decide on whatever that, that image would be.
Yeah, and I'm probably confused because actually what Laura just said, what the plan is, is I'm going to, we're going to take around a couple of images to all the stakeholders. We'll decide on that, get it developed. It's only like $500 to get the actual illustration completed. And then we'll do that before we wrap. So it will be part of the initial wrap. But if we didn't for some reason, it is possible to do...
To put a wrap over it.
But it's better to do it all at once. I'd rather do it all at once.
But the vendor did say it would last just as long if you did an image wrap later over the base wrap.
Yeah.
She did look into that.
I did. Because I thought, well, one option could be you could do it without the image, do the image later, but...
Well, it'd be nice to get this thing done and on the road and be done with it if down the, if at some future point in time, we did want to make a change. We could certainly do that. But the, if I'm hearing correctly, then the overall concept that's been presented, we can all get on board with?
Oh, yeah, I love the concept and the colors. Number one, it's colorful, but number two, it designates the purpose of the bus. And I totally agree with Cynthia that when people, it'll take a while, but when people start getting used to looking at a bus at certain color, whether it be the orange for the commuter bus or the green for the local services, they'll be able to know exactly which bus to get into. So I, I, I totally agree, I'm fine with the concept.
Okay, great. With that then, I would entertain a motion that we approve a bus graphic design concept and the funding and procurement process. So this would then authorize Cynthia to send out the bid, the request for bids.
For the RP, right.
And then we'll, we'll go from there because when, when we get that back, then we can determine what our timeline will be for moving forward.
I estimated like the 26. You'll have all the detail of the list of all the buses.
And you said there were a couple, I know of one local vendor, but you said there were a couple Yamhill County vendors that could potentially do that?
There's, in the area, there's, I'm aware of about five or six.
Because I'm only aware of the one.
And there's three that are probably used the most often. But, you know, one of the issues we have is we don't have a great facility for installation. So I'm asking that they, any of the vendors, if they're able to provide the facility, that's better. So because we have those two bays up at the, for student yard, but they're, it's, it'll be challenging.
Well, I know one of the local vendors, they, when they move, they have the facility that they take when they do a wrap, they drive it right inside. And everything's in a controlled environment for heat, right, temperature when it's supplied and everything.
And that would be a critical piece because, and let, you can't do it out in the yard.
No, I'd rather have, if they have room to do it, do it there. I, I agree.
But anyway, that'll all come out in the bidding process. So we can, we'll have an opportunity then to review that and move forward. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Cynthia.
And now we'll move on to...
We need to take a vote, Directors, Primisic.
Okay, well...
You made the motion so we can vote.
If you're going to take a vote, I, no. So we have a motion on the floor to accept the consideration of all the proposals that Cynthia's made. And with all the discussions, my motion was to move forward as per this item number three. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. If we could then, let the record show that Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Starrett and Commissioner Primisic all voted in the affirmative. And now we'll move on to discussion items. We have item number four, grant agreement 2339 for two minivans and two midsize buses.
Yeah, I'll just give you a quick update. We had written this grant, you know, like February, I think, of this year. And we already got approval, approved by OTC, and we already got the grant agreements. So that will come to you, those agreements will come to you at your next board meeting. And it is for two minivans, four midsize buses. And the, the graphics will be included in the specification.
Two minivans and four midsize? Okay, because this says two.
This says two.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, well, there's two, one grant has two minivans and two midsize, and the second grant has two...
So we're talking two different grants.
Okay, two different grants, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so grand total is, is six buses.
Which is item number five.
Yep.
So it has two more midsize buses.
I'm sorry, I don't have that, I'm looking at a different agenda.
No, that, that's fine.
No, that's fine.
I just wanted to make sure we were all talking about the same thing.
So the agreements are here and then I just didn't have, could get it all ready for this meeting, but we will get them, two at your next, at your next meeting.
Okay.
And I'm already started on the whole, doing the paperwork to, I want to get the procurement done as quickly as possible so we can order them, get them ordered right away. And since they're midsize, I think we should, we budgeted that we'll be able to receive them within 18, 19 fiscal year. So, are we in 2019?
We will be.
1920, whatever the next one is.
1819.
Time goes so fast, I can't keep track of it anymore. So I already provided the new buses update. So the four R-bucks will be here Friday. We're getting them licensed, checking them out. I think those will be in service probably next week and then the others probably mid-August. The Transit Development Plan Board update is scheduled for July 31st at your work session at 1:30, I believe.
Yes.
And that will be the final presentation to the board by the consultants. So it's the last one outlined in their scope of work. We have our final Project Advisory Committee, YCT advisory committee on July 26th. So that is the meeting, hopefully where the PAC will make a recommendation to the board to, you know, accept the, the recommendations of the plan.
Cynthia, can you let Commissioner Primisic move from item to item? That way, if the board has questions, he can solicit those on the boards we have.
So we were all satisfied on item four, five and six as they've been presented so far. And then the update on the Transit Development Plan, the board update will be on the July 31st. The 26th, the, the PAC board will meet to either approve or disapprove. And if it's disapproved by them, it probably won't come to us on 31st, so, okay. Then moving down to item number eight, bus shelters, bus maintenance contracts with Jerry Sound and Oregon Curb Appeal.
This is just to give you a heads up that you will be getting their agreements. We did do a bid process for, for both of these projects. Oregon Curb Appeal is the vendor that does cleaning of the bus shelters. He, he does the weeks that the juvenile department isn't doing because they weren't quite getting clean enough. And so with just the cycle that juvenile department had, we needed additional cleaning. So I did a bid process quite a while ago. The challenge for me was that I didn't know how much, I had no idea what it was really going to take. So now that, I sort of did a little bit of a pilot, like how much is this really, how much do we really need, how often do you really do them? Learned those lessons. And so when it comes to you, there'll be all the information about what the bid process was, who applied or who submitted bids and then their, their contracts for those two vendors.
Cynthia, will you be maintaining the juvenile contract?
Yes, we will. Yeah, it works pretty well actually right now with, with both of them. You know, the ones that are kind of left out there a little bit are, well, actually, I started having Jeff do Dayton's. Some of the ones that are in cities, like Lafayette tends to take care of their own, but primarily the shelters that are cleaned are in McMinnville and Newburgh. And then there's a few that are scattered around at some of the smaller cities. My goal would be that the small cities would sort of adopt the shelters and take care of them. Lafayette has certainly done that. Oh, I should just let you know, Amity, we're finally going to get a shelter for that. So we just had a conversation, we, you know, they changed staff and, you know, got dropped. And then anyway, so now we're back and actually just had, they just had a conversation yesterday. They want to move this location where we were going to place it. So now we know where it's going to be placed. Now it's just a matter of, we wanted to, we have to rent a flatbed truck and we wanted to do whatever shelter things we're going to do as far as moving and installing, all in one day. So, so we're going to time it out based on that. Like, once they're ready, they have their site ready, they have to remove a bench and then we'll, we'll try to plan to pick up one that doesn't belong where it is and place a couple others. So that should be happening, you know, here shortly. So by next winter, it only took two years, but, but not all our fault. It was, you know, it's a little mixture of a lot of things, but finally, there's going to be an additional shelter there. And we do have, the maps are coming along as far as where we want shelters. So that, that has taken some time too, but I think pretty soon we'll be able to send that out to all of the different entities so they know these are the ideal locations where we'd like to have shelters.
Well, didn't some of that come out of the study?
Yes, that's what we did. Actually, it was a little extra work I had the consultant do because it was... Yes, that's what we did. Actually, it was a little extra work I had the consultant do, because it wasn't really part of what they were doing, but, yeah. We were almost finished. We went through every single route, every bus stop. We only have two more to go, and they're the Newburgh ones, and that will be finished, but.
I was just curious how you'll be balancing the juvenile work with the contractor.
The way it is now, and I always forget the days.
It's okay, I don't need the days.
It's the opposite, like, if they do it on Sunday, then he, oh, no, they do it on Thursday, and then he cleans it again on Saturday.
So it's every other?
It's every other, yeah, they, they, the opposite day, and then the, I can't remember if it's the opposite week, every other week. Some of them are weekly, so like, the busiest shelters get cleaned more often than the, than the other ones. And that took a little time too for him to go. He went and monitored, said, well, does that one really need to be cleaned every week, or does it need to be cleaned every other week, and so that's some of the things we learned.
Good.
But we did realize we really still need both of them, because it is helpful to have both. And the juveniles changes depending on the time of year, they do it on one day in the summer, a different day in the winter.
You know, I, I, I just have a con, excuse me, comment and potential, uh, thing that we could look into. I know last week I had a meeting with, um, M V with Mid Valley, and seventy-five percent of their clientele is unemployed, running seventy-five percent unemployment rate. And they're looking at different ways to get their clients out of their, their centers and get them work to be done. Some was very simple work, like janitorial services and everything, and I'm wondering if, if we shouldn't at least explore the opportunity, because they transport their own crews, they do everything, with Mid Valley about potentially having their staff go around to the different shelters on whatever schedule is decided, and have them, because it gets the people that are in their programs out to do some work, and I, and when, when they're running a seventy-five percent unemployment, because they can't have, they don't have enough jobs for those people. And I was thinking, is that an opportunity that we could potentially take, take into consideration?
I think that's a great, I think that's a great observation. When the legislature changed, the, uh, worked it around so that, uh, people in sheltered workshops could no longer work in sheltered workshops, what you effectively did was people, put people who were not as employable out in the workforce with people who were more employable, you got a minimum wage, and you, what you did was you took people who were doing wonderfully and producing well in sheltered workshops, and you said, you cannot work anymore.
Yeah.
And, and, and there we have it. So, there was the solution, and now we have, now we have unemployed people.
Yeah, and I'm wondering, because they, even though it's not a workshop, when I talked to Marie and last week, and Connie, that they can provide this, they said they could still provide this kind of service, because they're not actually in a workshop-type setting.
Yeah.
They're going out, and, and I think it's a good thing we at least explore, what could they do, what they, could they do for us, so.
Did, did, uh, they provide a, um, bid on this, or did we reach out to them?
Um, I did have a meeting, and I pretended one of their, what do they call it, their ambassador meetings.
You're right.
They talked about their program is really, it is good, and they do send people, and it isn't, you know, I always hate that when so many, uh, programs like that where the only jobs they get are janitorial or cleaning, so I was trying to think of something that would be a little more fun for them, but, so we, I did actually have a meeting with one of the, the staff to talk about some ideas. I'm, I'm totally open to that, I think it's a good idea. Sometimes it's challenging to get them to be able to go, you know, all of the locations, but you can certainly focus in on, you know, McMenville or Newburgh or a certain spot. Maybe the busiest, busiest shelters, you could have an additional cleaning, and there's a lot of things that we could do.
Yeah, I think Cynthia, last year, we had a, early last year, a slight conversation on another potential option. You see it in some other cities, and I'm sure you know more about this than I do, Cynthia, about adopt a shelter where you might take grade schools in that area, and their parent teachers association or whatever, they maintain it, and for that, they get a sign on the shelter, you know, and, and that kind of thing. And I think that's another opportunity we could potentially look at.
It is, and those kinds of things used to work really well, but in this day and age, I've watched where volunteer groups, where you're counting on them, and it doesn't happen, unfortunately. It used to be that, when you did something like that, they, they really took ownership of it, but now we have, people are so involved with so many activities that that tends to fall off their list of to-do things, uh, you know, I, I'm not opposed at all to trying it.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, I think we really need to have a backup plan, because we can't just say, they're doing it, we've got to be able to
You know, I think that, like, the parent teachers associations and all those groups.
Yeah.
If you ask them to volunteer, I agree with Stan totally, but if there's an incentive behind it, like these organizations, school organizations, if we're gonna pay somebody to do the maintenance contract, you actually pay them a little bit that goes into funding school programs and recreational programs at schools, and so you don't, it's not really, I mean, it's volunteer, but they get something for doing that. I don't know if that'd make a difference or not.
Well, and we certainly, it's certainly, it's certainly something that can be, uh, looked into, and we can.
Is that sometimes what I've seen work in the past, is sometimes getting people to clean or maintain is difficult, but if you can give them, if you can do the, the work to get to the point where you allow them to have some creativity around maybe creating a, a shelter that has their image, so for example, we used to have a real problem shelter in this one location, and we tried everything. We tried cameras, we tried everything imaginable you can think of, nothing ever worked. And finally, we set it up, we pretty much set it up, went to the high school and said, okay, this shelter is your shelter, and we're gonna put your logo, whatever you want on it. So we got it etched, the glass etched, we had it with our logo. And I, and then we made it a school project where the, the, one of the kids in one class would ride the bus and monitor it. That shelter is perfect, still today, that shelter is perfect. And they, it has their logo on it, and it became, because it had their image and their mark, I guess is how I would look at it, their creativity went into it, they sort of took ownership of it. So I can envision that happening in some of the, but you, there's work involved to do that, but if you could get, you kind of give them parameters, say, okay, here, this is your shelter, and you can do what you want to with it, make it yours, then they feel like, oh, they don't want to see it look bad. And that's why the etching on this shelter glass works, because you don't tend to get graffiti.
Mm-hmm.
People sort of like it, that, you know, when you just have a basic shelter sitting there, people paint it, and they mark it, and they scratch it, and they do all sorts of, but
Right.
Something about it, when you add, I'm not saying it never happens, but it definitely lowers the rate of it. TriMet learned that, that's why they almost have every shelter etched with some kind of design. And it's a great way to involve for people, school, like Lynnfield, I think we should do that at Lynnfield. We have a shelter there, we had, that would be, we don't have a lot of Lynnfield writers or, or George Fox, and we should have more. Partly, I think they don't really know how the bus system works, they don't know much about it, but if they did, I think that would be a nice way to start.
You know, I'd actually see those things looked in, looked into.
Well, we can certainly, maybe set up some, uh, interaction between their student government and our transit system, and see if we can't make some of those connections.
You know, maybe when we do, if we're just trying to get Chemeckata to help us, you know, they said we could do the gate when we change the service. And they put in that shelter there by Chemeckata. We don't currently use that shelter because of us, but it will, when the service changes.
Yeah.
And it will, that might be a good place to start.
Yeah.
You could say, hey, let's do that all the way.
I think when we have the new full-time person on board and trained, that will free up some of the staff time to do this. But I would hope that the commissioners would see this as something to be explored once that has taken place and give Cynthia the latitude to do what's necessary right now, because it is something that we need to put in place.
Oh, yeah, no, but it's certainly something we want to be looking at.
Sure.
And see if we can't, I mean, if we're gonna spend the dollars anyway, can we make them more effective throughout the community? And so, thank you, Commissioner Olson. All right, uh, fleet replacement plan update, um, anything more than what you said?
Just that we're, there's more work to do, and so we scheduled a meeting, we're gonna follow up and discuss this again.
Yes.
I forgot it, I'm sorry, I didn't write the date down, but we have another meeting planned, so, just letting you know, we have forgotten about it, but there's a little more research and a little more work created to do regarding that.
Service improvement update?
Um, we've actually done quite a bit getting ready. Our, our plan was to make all the minor service, the, what we called the immediate service improvements, you know, this summer. Then we learned about the construction, um, around the transit center and the fact that we may have to temporarily move the buses over to Fifth Street, so it's sort of, it's put a little bit of a wrench in the, in the process, because we don't want to have to do things twice, or just the whole communication, but there's a lot that goes into it. So we have a, we do have our meeting scheduled with City of McMenville, and they're, they just selected their vendor. Um, it's scheduled for June twenty-eight.
Eight.
At three-thirty. So as soon as we have that meeting, then I think we can lay out the plan for when we'll be making those changes. I did meet with, for Rick's benefit, I did meet with, um, Winko, we did meet with Senior Center. Um, we have made some of the minor adjustments that relate to just efficiency, that don't really affect bus schedules and things like that. But if you want a list of all those things, I can just.
Yeah, just, if you have it, just write, just shoot it off to me.
Okay, item number eleven, City of McMenville Construction near Transit, we just, you've just mentioned that, so we're meeting with them on the twenty-eighth. Committee restructured to meet S T F and S, S T F and S T I F and Y C T A requirements. Uh, I do know that, uh, you had talked to Sean at COG, and I, I also had some conversation with him, and he's more than willing to facilitate that conversation, so, uh, I think that's something that, as, after we complete the review of the plan, then, uh, it would behoove us to look at that and see if we can make it uh, a more functional operation, so, any?
No, I guess my only comment is, I totally agree. I think anytime we can take committees, as long as we're making those changes for the right reasons, if the committees don't function well now for some reason, and we could change our committees to function more effectively, then we should definitely do.
Are the directors aware of the requirement that comes with the new money?
Yeah, the new money, the new state transportation improvement fund, I think it's what those acronyms stands for, has a requirement that you must create a committee. The county is going to be the qualifying entity, and you will receive the money, and then, um, you have to be able to, well, you won't receive the money unless you have this committee in place that meets their requirements, and you have a plan, thank goodness we'll have our transit plan, and then, um, those two factors have to be in place if we want to go, um, seek funding for the first round, which is due like in November of this year. So, what we've started looking at is, we looked at the requirements for the S T F committee, the Y C D advisory committee, and the STIF committee. And I, I believe there's a way that we could have one committee that can meet all of those.
Requirement.
All of those requirements. I did discuss it with the S T F committee, I've had some conversations with Laura and with Stan, and then I went and met with Sean at, um, thinking he could help us, you know, through the beginning process, maybe, and, and so we're working on that right now, and as soon as I have, um, you know, I, I have some more conversations, I need to have Christian just make sure legally that what we're doing is right, and then also, you know, politically, we want to make sure that, you know, we, we handle it appropriately. Maybe it is that we start with a overarching committee, we still keep the S T F committee, it's a subcommittee, I haven't decided all of that yet. But I think ideally, from a staff ta, you know, staffing standpoint, it would be very nice to have one committee that could serve all those functions, and maybe just wear different hats like you're doing right now. Um, and yet still play all those roles, that would be ideal, because then we, you know, it'd be less meetings, and it would be and I think also, folks would, you know, we've had some complaints in the past where there's a lot of people come to the S T F committee wanting to talk about everything to do with transit. If you had one committee, then there's one committee they come to to talk about all the various things to do with transit. STIF is all about the funding, and it is funding of all transit-related um, projects. S T F is primarily elderly and disabled, but when you look at the makeup of the committee on both, they're very similar. There is a limit, STIF, I think, requires at least, for our type of an entity, at least nine members. And I think S T F also is a nine member. I mean, ideally, I, I don't love committees with, you know, fifteen people. Our Y C D advisory committee is, is eleven, not including the liaison. Um, and then we added, you know, Frank from S T F, so I think we have close to thirteen on our Y C D advisory. But it's worked, so I think we can make it work. So, um, I don't have the timeline of when this'll come to you, but we need to do it soon, it's already, you know, time is ticking, and I, we really have to get it.
We definitely don't want to miss that deadline.
Yeah, so we can apply for the funding.
Okay.
The one thing we don't have on this that you might want to ask for an update on is the funding committee.
Oh, yeah. We have a funding, a, a subcommittee.
Committee.
Project advisory committee is scheduled to meet on the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, right.
Three, three o'clock.
It's in my calendar.
Yeah, um, and that, the purpose of that committee is, um, to really look at a couple of things. One, what would be the fair and most equitable way to, to collect, um, contributions from all the small cities for Yamhill County Transit? And, and or long-range, even when you, when you look at the plan and you look at the financial uh, components of it over the next ten years, you can see that even with the new money, there's still gonna be gaps. So it could be that they really do need to prioritize, if you have to have local funding, what, where do you want it to come from, and what should be. So I thought, we thought a smaller group could wrestle with those things, and hopefully, ideally, they'll come up with a recommendation that could be.
Yeah, I, I think we've got seven, seven committed.
We have reps from small cities, Newburgh, McMenville, I can't remember if Chris is gonna come to the tribe.
It, well, Chris is, he's on the committee, yes, so, we, it'll, it'll be a well-represented committee, but it will be a small enough committee, we can really look at what are ways that we can do this, and how we can recommend, and come up with a workable solution, so, uh, anyway, we'll start that on the twenty-second. Uh, and working, uh, did you have anything further on the tribe?
Um, just the fact that you'll, we have a tribal agreement that's gone back and forth a number of times, but we have a couple more changes that we need to make, so that should be coming to you, I think by your next meeting. Um, it does have an increase, and they have actually already started paying us the increase, because we started this process a while ago. Um, and so actually, we've been billing them at a higher rate, so that's the good news, but.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Christian has told me to report to you that, uh, the board, that he's working on that, and he's hoping to have it to you by the end of next week, and in place by the end of the month.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Cynthia, thank you very, very much.
Cynthia.
If there is anything further that anybody would like to bring up, otherwise, I will, uh, adjourn this meeting of the Yamhill County Transit Area.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Thank you for your time. I thought that was important to update you all. Thank you for your time. I thought that was important to update you all.
I thought that was important to update you all.